Good evening and welcome to the Tampa Hillsborough Expressway Authority's Virtual Town Hall. My name is Sue Sharzan and I am the Director of Communication and Public Affairs here at THIA, and I am so glad that you have joined us tonight. The Expressway Authority has about a half a billion dollars' worth of transportation and community improvement scheduled in the next five years. That's half a billion dollars. All of this work means we need to make sure that we keep our community, and that's you, updated on all of our projects and studies. Tonight is our opportunity to start that dialogue. Five projects, all happening in South Tampa, are on the agenda to discuss tonight, but before we really get started, I want to go over a few housekeeping items. First, if your screen gets stuck or frozen at any time, please hit F5 or the Refresh button on your browser. On your screen, you should see my PowerPoint presentation on the left-hand side of the screen and a question-and-answer box on the lower right-hand side. Our team members are here to answer your questions about tonight's presentation. However, I suggest that you listen to the entire presentation, it's about a half an hour long, because I'm confident that the presentation will answer your questions and that you won't get distracted. Rest assured that we will keep the Virtual Town Hall meeting live until all questions have been answered. A recording of this presentation, as well as a list of the questions and answers, will be posted on THIA's website, that's tampa-xway.com, the extension website, selmonextension.com, and the studies website, selmonstudies.com. If you have a question that is not answered in the presentation or in the ensuing Q&amp;A, you can always submit your question via the contact form on the tampa-xway.com website. Now, a little bit about us. The Tampa Hillsborough Expressway Authority, or THIA as we are known, is a local toll agency run by a board of directors. We are an agency of the state, which means we follow all of the procurement rules and the manual on uniform traffic control devices. In other words, there are rules and procedures that we must follow. We use no tax dollars to build, operate, and maintain the Leroy-Selman Expressway, the Brandon Parkway in Brandon, Meridian Avenue near Amalie Arena, and the Selmon Greenway, which is a pedestrian and bicycle path connecting Ebor City, Channel Side, and Tampa's Riverwalk. Again, THIA receives no tax funding and all of the tolls paid on the Selmon Expressway stay in Hillsborough County. In fact, the projects and studies that we will talk about tonight are all paid for by toll dollars and THIA toll bonds. You may be surprised to learn that THIA is internationally known for its innovative approach to finding transportation solutions. In 2009, we were awarded the highest award in the tolling industry in the world for the reversible express lanes. We were the first reversible all-electronic toll lane in the world. If you travel to Miami or Atlanta today, those lanes are a copy of ours. In 2019, the THIA Connected Vehicle Pilot Program was awarded the Best Intelligent Transportation System in the United States and was inducted into the Intelligent Transfer Systems Industry's World Hall of Fame. We are the first non-Department of Transportation agency to win this coveted top award. If you have been in the Tampa Bay area for a while, you'll likely have noticed a tremendous amount of growth around you, especially in the past five to 10 years. There are new businesses, new entertainment areas, new apartments, condos, homes, and subdivisions. With this growth comes an increase in traffic. Whether you are in a car, a bus, or rideshare, on a bike, or walking, you've felt the increase. In fact, on the Leroy-Selman Expressway alone, traffic has increased by over 95% in the past 10 years. Tampa Bay continues to attract more people. The Hillsborough County Planning Commission predicts 700,000 new county residents by 2045, and that number doesn't include similarly growing populations in Pinellas, Nantucket, and Pasco Counties, whose residents work in Hillsborough County and use the interstates and the Selmon Expressway as part of their daily commute. THIA has been proactively preparing for this population explosion. We know that the growth is here and that there's more on the way. Our current five-year work program has over half a billion dollars' worth of transportation and community improvement projects. We also have several project development and environmental studies that will determine if additional improvements are needed, and those may well result in more improvement projects in the future. The five projects and studies that are being presented tonight help the Expressway Authority accommodate the growth, plan and implement solution for the projected growth, and all the while continuing to provide safe, reliable, and cost-effective transportation solutions that connect communities and reinvest revenues back into our transportation system. So let's begin with the Selmon Extension. The Selmon Extension is a 1.9-mile toll lane located in the median of Gandy Boulevard. The extension will give regional travelers a choice: use Gandy Boulevard for local destinations or use the Selmon Extension for a direct connection to the Selmon Expressway or the Gandy Bridge. From the beginning, THIA has been committed to listening to our neighbors. The extension is 30 feet high because the businesses along Gandy Boulevard asked us to design something that didn't cause a visual barrier. They wanted potential customers to be able to see across the road to the other side of the street. The community asked for a signature bridge, so we added design elements and color to our requirements. In fact, we conducted a poll which asked the public to choose the design of the piers and the fins. The estuary design was the overwhelming winner. Both lanes eastbound and westbound are open on Gandy Boulevard during rush hour because we promised the commuters that we would not close lanes during rush hour. We also require that all work is done in the median, which means the business driveways stay open. We are committed to listening to our community and delivering on our promises. So now, let's take you on a video tour of the project.
The holes that are in the bottom, that is for the steel cables for the tendons to go through. The small concrete square in the middle is used for temporary stressing of the segments. Every segment that's cast has another segment that's cast right up against it so the p-way's locked together. There are 744 segments total. You can see it's got the final coat on it for the exterior paint. You'll see pockets that have been cast into the concrete barrier wall. Those are recessed for the aesthetic lighting that's going to be installed. Each of these fins has a minimum of three sets of post-tensioning tendons. First of its kind in America, as far as I know. You'll be able to see Howard Franklin Bridge off to your right. You'll be able to see the lights from the Sunshine Skyway off to the left. You get an incredible sunset. You'll see metal grates, that's our drainage system. We never put any additional water down on the ground. You can see the amount of steel that goes into any one of these barrier wall sections. They use external vibrators that actually shake the forms. It helps the concrete fill all the voids. The pivot crane will pick them up and literally pivot out over the steel truss system that you can see to my left. We are in Span 10. Those are external post-tensioning tendons. They're called external simply because they're outside of the concrete. That's the segment number, the date that it was cast. All right, we'll go back up top and then probably head to the east end. Behind me, you can see the overpass that's being built for the new northbound connection to the Selmon Expressway. You can see the Steel Tub Gerder Bridge. This wall section is approximately 40 feet high. One of the things that makes this project special is the size of it and how quickly we're building it. It's a $230 million job, it's going to take a little over two years. Folks are going to be able to drive from Pinellas County east through Tampa to wherever they need to go without having a single stoplight.
A huge shout-out to our tour guide, Matt Kapler. Thank you so much. One thing that you didn't get to see in the behind-the-scenes video was the casting yard where all of the bridge segments are made. The yard is located on Causeway Boulevard, and the segments are hauled to the site via the Selmon Expressway. Over 550 segments out of 744 have been cast and they are ready to be placed, and these segments can weigh up to 72 tons. One thing that you might not know is that since Gandy Boulevard is not a straight road, each segment is unique, so that's 744 unique segments, and those segments have to be placed in order. The casting operation will wrap up later this summer. The Selmon Extension Bridge is built like the reversible express lanes with segmental pieces, but it has a unique design element. On the top of the bridge structure are fins. These fins hold cabling for the bridge. In addition to having cables inside the segments, like the reversible express lanes, each of these fins hold what I like to call a mini Skyway Bridge inside. While these types of bridges have been built around the world, it's a first for the United States. Using this type of design allows us to have piers further apart, again helping to protect the visibility of the businesses along Gandy Boulevard. The other unique aspect of this project is that typically, a cement-based grout is used around the tension cables to help with corrosion. This project is using a petroleum-based grout, we call it a wax, for that purpose. This wax has been in use in other areas, but this is the first time it's being used in Florida. So where are we on the construction of the extension? We have completed seven of the 27 fins on the bridge structure. There are just over 12,500 bridge deck panels in the interchange area, and we have about 2,000 placed. We have finished all of the pier foundation work, so basically everything that you'll never see is complete. We also finished 49 out of 55 piers. We are this close to finishing the pile-driving operation, and we have installed 1,400 concrete piles for ground improvements to support the new ramps at the Dale-Mabry and Gandy Boulevard interchange. The total project is about 75% complete. The original opening date was anticipated to be late 2020. The current expected opening date is mid-2021. The cost for the extension is $230 million, and again, no tax dollars are used to build this project. It is funded by toll bonds and toll revenue. 100% of THIA's toll revenues are reinvested into the community for maintenance of our roadways, greenways, and other community projects that we will discuss later in this The Selmon Extension is THIA's biggest project, both in terms of cost and complexity. The second construction project to talk about tonight is smaller in scale and quicker to finish, but it is a very important project that will help provide a safer road for our The South Selmon Safety Project will enhance driver safety by constructing a concrete barrier wall in the median of the expressway between the Hillsborough River and Heims Avenue, basically where the extension project begins. This is what the median used to look like. This barrier wall between the eastbound traffic and the westbound traffic will prevent crossover accidents. Studies show that the median barriers are effective in reducing fatal crashes and serious injury crashes caused by crossover accidents. In addition to the barrier wall, the shoulders among the median are being paved to create a safe location for disabled vehicles to pull over and await assistance. This will also help keep our Road Ranger and First Responder safe as they help motorists. This is what the project looks like today. And this is what it's expected to look like when completed. There are no lane closures on the Selmon Expressway during peak travel times. Lane closures are from 9:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. daily. We do not work at night on this project. This helps to lessen the impact to the residents who live adjacent to the expressway. In addition, there is no impact to the streets under the expressway. The expected completion date for this project is July, and the cost for this project is $25 million. So those are the two big construction projects happening right now. The construction is physical work that everyone can see, but how does a project like the Selmon Extension come to fruition? What are the steps to bring a project from an idea to the actual groundbreaking? As with a lot of things, it's complicated and multi-phased. As I mentioned, we are an agency of the state, so we follow procedures and processes that all agencies use. First, you identify an issue or opportunity for improvement. Then you begin the planning process, going on to see if it's worthwhile to continue. Then you conduct a study to determine the feasibility of any improvements. This study is called a Project Development and Environmental Study, or PDNE. Then typically, you start designing the process and buying right-of-way. Only after all of these steps can you go to construction of a project, and of course, there's always maintenance of the newly-built infrastructure. A PDNE study looks at the purpose and need of the proposed improvement, the basic "why" of the project. The phase is complex, not only because we look at how the project will help with an issue, we have to make sure that it doesn't make another situation worse. Also, any project we are looking at must be consistent with the city of Tampa or Hillsborough County plans. It must truly be an improvement for our customers. The study is designed to ask and answer a lot of questions. Are there utilities that need to be moved? Is there drainage that needs to be changed? Is there a noise increase for the community? What safety features need to be considered? Is there contamination in the soil? Are there any historic properties near the improvement? And finally, what is the anticipated cost of the improvement and how complex is the construction of that improvement? Right now, THIA has two PDNE studies for potential improvements to the Selmon Expressway. The South Selmon PDNE study is looking at capacity issues on the southern portion of the expressway. The study area is from Heims Avenue to Whiting Street in downtown Tampa. We talked about the growth in the last 10 years and the projected growth of the next 20. That's the reason to do this study. How much more capacity is needed in that section of the expressway, and how will that look? Do future traffic projections show the need for six lanes or eight? How will that capacity fit in the envelope of the expressway? This PDNE study will evaluate the potential impacts of each alternative, including environmental impacts, costs, engineering considerations, and consistency with the project's purpose and need. The primary purpose of the South Selmon PDNE study is to evaluate the needs, costs, and effects of constructing improvements that will increase traffic capacity on the South Selmon Expressway. The study will also identify solutions to the frequent congestion at entry and exit points along the expressway. Travel time reliability is important to our customers, so we're looking at ways to reduce travel time during the morning and evening rush. The study will also evaluate strategies to eliminate conflict points and reduce crashes. And reduce congestion and improve safety, coupled with the Selmon Extension project, will enhance east-west mobility for our region. However, traveler's safety is not our only concern. As THIA strives to enhance regional mobility, we also know that we have neighbors right next door. Following the approved processes, we are also looking at noise and barrier walls, the need, the constructability, and the cost. The next video will help illustrate the noise analysis process.
Florida is one of the nation's fastest-growing states, both in population and employment, and we need a robust transportation system with enough capacity to move all those people and goods where they need to go. The Tampa Hillsborough Expressway Authority, or THIA, is working to do just that. We are committed to providing a safe and reliable transportation system that enhances economic prosperity and helps to preserve the quality of our communities and environment. As we evaluate expressway enhancements, we look at a number of factors, including the noise impacts associated with the enhancement. We use a state and federally-approved analysis to determine noise impacts, including whether noise walls are needed, constructable, and cost-affordable. This nationwide process usually begins during the project development phase, well before construction. We conduct a noise study when we are building new roads or adding capacity to the Selmon Expressway. During the noise analysis, we identify noise-sensitive areas closest to the roadway. Traffic engineers predict future traffic volumes a project may add. Then, we enter existing traffic and forecasted traffic, and natural and constructed features of the area into the Federal Highway Administration's standard traffic noise model. This model determines future noise levels if a project is built, in comparison to existing noise levels, to calculate noise impacts. To accurately predict each project's traffic noise, we collect sample field measurements of existing noise to validate that the model is working accurately for each project area. When determining if a noise wall is a feasible and reasonable solution, we consider several variables. First, we evaluate if the noise wall will reduce future traffic noise for impacted areas. The governing standards for this determination is to achieve a benefit of a 5-decibel reduction for two impacted receptors, and a 7-decibel reduction for one benefited receptor. Then, we calculate the cost of building the noise wall. Next, we determine if it is possible to be constructed in a location that would provide the noise-reduction benefit. Finally, we make sure that the property owners and residents actually want a noise wall. A few things to note about this process. We know that large construction projects often are noisy, but in this process, construction noise is not considered as part of the noise study. Only the noise resulting from the traffic of a completed highway project is part of the noise study. Not all highway traffic noise goes away with the construction of a noise wall. In fact, the biggest noise reduction is observed directly behind the wall. Construction of homes, apartments, businesses, et cetera, that are permitted after the PDNE study is approved will not be considered in future phases of the project. By following this state and federally-approved study methodology, we are able to make fair and informed decisions regarding increased noise. As Tampa Bay continues to grow, we'll continue to seek balanced solutions that work for
The South Selmon PDNE study began last year and is expected to be completed in July of 2021. This Virtual Town Hall is one of the many methods that we use to keep our neighbors and our customers updated on the happenings at THIA. The next opportunity for discussion about the South Selmon PDNE study will be in May of this year. We will host another Virtual Town Hall that will launch our website application. This application will include a step-by-step update of the findings of our study, including noise and safety findings. We will also show the proposed improvements and offer an opportunity to comment on them. We will also hold an informational meeting in June to give those who do not have access to a computer the opportunity to see the website application and to make comments. Project representatives will be on hand to answer questions. At the conclusion of the study, THIA will again hold a Virtual Town Hall and an informational meeting to show the preferred alternative and the final recommendations of the study. After that, THIA will decide if the project can move forward into a design phase and then constructions. Costs will be estimated as part of the study and will be refined during the final design phase. We understand and share the concerns of neighbors relating to noise, safety, and other impacts associated with the use and potential capacity increase on the Selmon Expressway. Our second PDNE study is the Whiting Street PDNE. The Whiting Street PDNE will be conducted in close coordination with the South Selmon PDNE to make sure that the needs are met along the entire Selmon Expressway. The extension of Whiting Street is a commitment from THIA to the city of Tampa related to the Selmon Expressway reversible express lanes project. Once Canagra vacates the property on the Channel District, the CSX rail lines currently serving the Flower Mill will be removed to allow for the realignment and extension of Whiting Street. The purpose of this project is to improve safety, accessibility, and circulation along the Selmon Expressway and throughout downtown and the Channel District. The extensions of Whiting and Washington Streets will provide capacity improvements while complementing the city's street grid network. Significant development throughout the city and Channels District alongside anticipated traffic demand on the Selmon Expressway has further spurred the need to improve the downtown accessibility and circulation options, and as well as enhance the safety and traffic flow along the expressway. As with the South Selmon PDNE, communication and community outreach is a critical component of the Whiting PDNE study. This study is just getting started. With a completion date of December 2021, the Virtual Town Hall is already being planned for January of 2021. THIA is looking ahead and planning to help address our region's growth. We want to not only design transportation solutions to accommodate this growth, but we want to do so in a comprehensive manner that prioritizes safety and noise mitigation and minimizes community and environmental impacts. The last project to discuss tonight is one that doesn't improve traffic capacity, but it does have a positive impact in our community. THIA is always investing our dollars back into the community in a positive way. While we connect communities with road projects, we also partner with neighborhood associations with our community enhancement program, designed to help improve neighborhood underpasses of the Selmon Expressway. The photos on this slide represent community enhancement projects. The top-left picture is the Brandon Tower, a 16-by-6-foot painting provided by the Brandon Arts Council. To the right is our heroic-sized statue of the expressway's namesake, Leroy Selman. The top-right is Frames on Franklin, a partnership with the city of Tampa and Tampa's Downtown Partnership. In the middle is our Tampa Play mural by celebrated Tampa artist, BAP. On the lower-left, we've all seen these photos on social media of the bridge lights over the Hillsborough River. This again was a partnership with the city of Tampa. And finally, on the lower-right, our award-winning Cutfield Memorial Dog Park, honoring a true hero, Deputy John Cutfield Jr., who gave his life to save another from a wrong-way driver on the expressway in 2016. One notable community enhancement project in South Tampa is the Swan Avenue Underpass. We cleaned and painted the walls and pier columns, added a coating that will make it easier to remove graffiti, and installed the beautiful landscaping and lighting. We also made the sidewalks wider for pedestrians, strollers, joggers, and bikes to traverse this walkway under the overpass. We partnered with the neighborhood associations. THIA built the project, and the neighborhood associations are maintaining the area. This project was completed in 2009 and is a huge improvement in accessibility for the neighborhood. So now, we're turning our sights to Morrison Avenue. And currently, it looks like this. And this is what it should look like in approximately 90 days. We are building the design that the neighborhood association brought to us. If your neighborhood association is interested in this program, please contact us through the THIA website, and we would be happy to set up a meeting to walk you through the process. That's tampa-xway.com. Thank you for your attention. I speak for everyone here at the Expressway Authority when I say that we are truly appreciative of you taking time out of your busy day to join us, and we are committed to providing ongoing, transparent, and accessible communication about these projects. You can stay informed by signing up for our newsletter, having a THIA representative present to your group or neighborhood association, attending a future town hall, or contacting us directly with questions. This completes the March 5 Virtual Town Hall. We will leave the presentation open until we have answered all the questions. Thank you again, and have a great evening. Thank you again and have a great evening. Thank you again for being on the webcast. We are now going to close the question and answers. If you did not get your question answered, please check on the website tomorrow afternoon and we'll have all of the Q&amp;A up there. Again, thank you for your attendance and have a good evening.